Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, all council members are here and accounted for, meeting agenda approval. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Yes, one, okay.
Can I pull an agenda item?
Of course.
I would like to pull AB 19183.
All right. Any other changes to tonight's agenda? How we doing on AV, will we back up? We don't have to do the shuffle. How we doing on the officer? Not here yet, okay. So, we're gonna play that by ear. We have an officer we're gonna recognize tonight, but she is returning from a call. So, when she gets here, we will slide her into the agenda. So, next is public engagement opportunities. There we go. Okay, test my eyes. The dog park, the Papa Park has opened at City Hall, April, I'm sorry, opened through February 2nd, or as conditions allow. Join us for an open house for the Park at Bothell Landing Pedestrian Bridge Replacement Project, Monday, November 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Lidle House. And the last one is, we want you to visit our website and take our survey regarding restrictions on single-use plastic bags. Council will consider this issue on November 19th, and your input is important. And there's our website for more information. All right, next on the agenda is, we're gonna move on. So, we'll come back to the special presentation, city manager, council reports. City manager has none, council, any reports? Councilmember Zornz?
Everything's right here at the beginning. Just a brief report on CTC meeting from last week. There were some things that I thought might interest everyone.
Sorry, what's CTC?
The community transporta-, city community transportation. It's the joint project in the campuses, the city, and neighborhoods. The Corporation House down by Chase House is going to be finished in 2020. So, if people are down there at the wetlands and they see a project going on, that's what's happening. AU of Dub Dorum is going in at the existing Husky Village on Beardsley and 185th. It's going from 300 beds to between 800 and 900 units at six stories. And the finish date is 2023. There'll be 400 onsite parking stalls. That's the initial plan going on. 185th will become a through street on the campus end for transit. They're still discussing roundabout options as they impact Station 42 and the existing affordable apartment housing just west of campus. Neighbors are expressing and noting the spread of off-campus parking in all directions but east. So, up in your neighborhood, Andy, and then south of that as well. Police are really mindful, and I think everybody appreciated that. There's a STEM building going in, and its finish date is about 2022. It's going in where the ancestors are, on campus, if you know where the ancestors are. Also, let's see. And then just a shout out to Ryan McGurven and Megan Walker of Cascadian Route, U. Dub Bothell, for keeping the community engaged in what's going on. They're doing a nice job managing that and keeping all the pieces together. And that's the sum of what I have to report on that.
Councilmember Agnew.
The Arts Committee, we've met a couple of times. As you can see, we have Barbara Wren's pastels throughout the city. They'll be up here till January. So, take a look at all these nice pastels that we have.
All right, any other committee reports? There we go, councilmember McCall. Louise, your mic, please.
All right, so councilmember James McNeil and I attended the ETP meeting, East Side Transportation meeting. And I thought it was quite interesting because what we really looked at was, first of all, what, why the car tabs failed? That was interesting. Also, they did a large report on safety of pedestrian and bike. So, it's pretty interesting when you look at how we build our road system so it all connects. But when you talk about pedestrians walking and bike trails, nothing connects. So, they're really looking at the safety and how to address that. I would say for myself that education of the drivers would make a big difference, too. They also started up with our, the aviation study. So, where's the next airport going? So, that was pretty interesting as well. And so, that was the ETP meeting, East Side Transportation.
Any other committee reports? We had the mayor's lunch today, and there's nothing really to report on. We could hardly hear. But it was a good, it was nice to see everybody, say farewell, because I'm leaving. All right, anyways, so I guess we'll wait, we're still waiting? Yep, okay. So, we'll go into the visitor comment period, and we have a couple signups. Let me read my fun little statement. The, each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of the council, without the permission of the mayor. And the first sign up is, I have two first signups, Mr. Bill Moritz.
Good evening, council, Bill Moritz. I'd like to speak just briefly about the bridge replacement at the Park at Bothell Landing. First of all, I want to thank the staff and everybody who was involved in getting that project to the point where we got a contract now. I think that's great, good job. I am a little concerned, however, about the detour that's been proposed, and
I'm sorry, so we have some technical difficulties tonight, and we had, so the podium computer was not working at all through the AV. So, in order to get the presentations to work, we had to flip it through the doc cam. So, if we're gonna show that, we have to unhook that, everything up there to show the doc cam. We can make copies for council, we'd be happy to do that and pass those out, but we've, that was the only way we could get the presentations that we're showing tonight to show up. So, we can certainly make copies for you, if that would work.
Okay, well, let me just say what I think some of the problems are. So, the detour that's shown is you're coming from the west. They take you on the Summamish River Trail at the Burke-Gilman Junction. But then you go across the bridge, and you have to make a hard right turn around. There's a steep off-ramp there, hard right turn, go up the little connector trail to the West Riverside Trail. I don't know why we just don't take them across the trestle directly. If that's, if they're heading through to Woodenville, rather than dropping down the hill, doing all that turning, and then getting on the West Riverside Trail anyway. But I'm most concerned about the 102nd, the connection back to the trail at 102nd. The note, it implies that people are going to use the sidewalk, bicyclists and pedestrians. That sidewalk is only five feet wide. There are a lot of senior citizens that use that. This is gonna go for 150 business days, I understand. That's gonna put us into June, probably. There's a lot of bicyclists that are going through Bothell, not just visiting Bothell. So, I'd really encourage, take a serious look at that. And my suggestion would be that we put sharrows on 102nd, from Riverside to the bridge. So that it encourages bicyclists to use the roadway, which they're legally allowed to do, and don't jam everybody down a five-foot sidewalk. I think that's just asking for trouble. Some bicycles will choose to walk their bike, that's their choice. But I think most bicyclists that are especially going through are gonna wanna ride. So, we need to accommodate that in some way. And then the other alternative is to go across the river and then get up on that little cutback thing that takes you up to the 102nd Avenue Bridge. That's not gonna be very bicycle-friendly either. So, I plan to attend the meeting on Monday night, the open house, and I'll be happy to talk with the staff at that time. I did get an answer to the question of why we're gonna have to close the bridge for, the crossing, for four weeks. I just got that tonight from the project engineer, so I've got an answer to that question, anyway. That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next on the list is John Scheller, I think? Schellen? Schellen, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Scheller with the King County Library System. And I wanted to call your attention to a joint venture between KCS and the City Parks Department. We were able to bring an arts-in-the-park activity in August to the amphitheater space. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew about that. That's one of our ongoing efforts to work with city staff when we can to stretch both of our resources for our shared constituents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have nobody else signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to give a public comment? Lots of Boy Scouts, nothing? Okay. All right, we are moving backwards real quick here. We're gonna go back to, because somebody was actually working. Thanks for protecting our community, welcome. We have a life-saving award for Officer Louise Moreau. We have Chief Suber to give it. Did I say your last name right?
Yes.
Is this on? Perfect. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, it's my pleasure to recognize Officer Louise Moreau this evening for a life-saving award. On July 31st, 2019, Officer Moreau was conducting patrol in the area of the Holly Hills Clubhouse due to frequent reports of suspicious and criminal activity. Officer Moreau came upon a vehicle that was parked horizontally across three parking stalls. As Officer Moreau moved closer to the vehicle, she could see a lone occupant behind the wheel. This subject was drenched in sweat and appeared to be foaming from the mouth. She also noticed a medical alert bracelet and what appeared to be a blood sugar monitor inside the vehicle. Officer Moreau recognized that the male, in his late 50s, was experiencing a medical emergency and immediately called for medical aid to respond. Officer Moreau stayed with the driver and attempted to communicate with him. However, at this point, he was unconscious and non-responsive. Officer Moreau assisted the medics in removing the subject and placing him on a backboard to receive medical treatment. Medics advised the man's blood sugar level was 35. At that level, levels below 50 are often fatal. If it wasn't for the proactive police work and decisive actions of Officer Moreau, this subject would have likely suffered a fatal medical emergency. Medics, along with the assistance of Officer Moreau, were able to return the subject's blood sugar to normal levels and he regained consciousness. Officer Moreau should be commended for her proactive policing, recognition of the medical emergency, and her quick and appropriate response. Officer Moreau's actions led to this person receiving expedited medical attention and treatment. For her efforts and actions, Officer Louise Moreau is awarded the Bothell Police Department Life Saving Award.
Okay, and now we're on to the consent agenda. So, we've had one item polled, which was AV 19-183. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, passes unanimously. All right, AV 19-183, acceptance of King County Flood District grant for 35th Avenue project. You have the floor.
What could she possibly want to pull it for? And it's really, nothing beyond just wanting to shine a spotlight. I think a lot of what we maintain here in the city of Bothell goes under the public eye, and we don't get a chance to really appreciate it until we're trying to drive down a street and it's flooded and what's going on, and why don't they fix that, as we well know with Park Creek? So, I just wanted to give a nod to the way that this was managed. I really appreciated them recognizing that a culvert was not, was going to have, needed to stay in place but needed maintenance, and it wasn't worth the impact on traffic. What was it, like 9,000 cars daily that travel down 35th? And that they came up with a plan that would continue to protect Coal and Woods Creek. And I just wanted to bring that to public attention, because it's, it seems like a small thing until it's a big thing, because you can't drive down the street and it's flooded. And that was my reason for pulling it.
All right, do you wanna make a motion to approve it?
Yes. I move that we authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement that is substantially, that's a lot of syllables there, substantially the same form with the King County Flood District to receive revenue in the amount of $275,000.
I'll second it. So, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, so the most, do you ever understand the motion? It's not, all right, all those in favor say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Moving right along. On to contracts, AV 19-185, progressive design-build agreement with BN Builders and Miller Hall Partnership for the Bothell Fire Stations 42 and 45 Replacement Project. And we have Mr. Jeff Sperry.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I'm here tonight to present the Fire Station 42 and 45 rebuild project and the design-build contract agreement, along with the Phase 1A approval. Tonight's agenda for this is background, design, bid-build versus progressive design-build, why progressive design-build, procurement, design-build agreement, and then questions and answers. Starting with background, in November of 2018, voters passed the Safe and Secure Bond to fund the replacement of Bothell Fire Stations 42 and Fire Station 45. In April of 2019, city contracted with OEC Services Incorporated as the project manager. OEC Services Incorporated provided a special presentation about progressive design-build at the July 2nd, 2019 council meeting. The picture to the right is a heat map of the response times for all the fire stations for the city of Bothell. For this slide, we're showing the two different conceptual timelines for design-bid-build versus progressive design-build. The first one that you see at the top there is using design-bid-build. And you can see that that's a very step-by-step process. It's a tried-and-true method. It has multiple owner contracts, typically has a longer duration, and no opportunity for overlap, and a late cost certainty. The lower diagram shows a progressive design-build timeline, shows that it's a more fluid process, allowing for flexibility, innovation, and overlapping activities. It's a one-owner contract. It shows a reduced schedule and an early cost certainty. The city chose progressive design-build to achieve early collaboration between the owner, designer, and builder. Greater opportunity for innovation and efficiency than design-bid-build, more informed estimating and scheduling during design, operation and maintenance and lifecycle costing, procurement of subcontractors and suppliers in a competitive market, phasing and sequencing of two stations and temporary facilities while critical services are maintained, and open book pricing and transparency. Some of the procurement requirements, procurement of a design-builder is prescribed by the state in RCW 39.10, including the evaluation and contracting process. Procurement starts with a request for qualifications. Evaluation factors for qualifications include technical qualifications, capacity to perform, and other appropriate factors. Cost or price-related factors are not permitted in the request for qualifications phase. The statements of qualifications are evaluated, and the shortlisted teams are invited to submit proposals. According to RCW, evaluation factors for finalists, proposals must include the management plan to meet time and budget requirements, and one or more price-related factors. Proposals may also be evaluated on technical approach, design concept, and other factors. The city received eight statements of qualifications, shortlisted to four finalists, and selected BN Builders-Miller Hall Partnership. The team members have experience with fire stations and alternative deliveries such as GCCM, design-build, and progressive design-build. The BN Builders-Miller Hall Partnership delivered six projects as a team. These include five new King County libraries as a design-build team and a University of Washington Police Department. Miller Hall Partnership recently completed the Mercer Island Fire Station 92. And other progressive design-build projects include the Sea-Tac International Arrivals, the University of Washington Population Health, and the University of Washington West Campus Utility Plant. The design-build agreement, this, the proposed agreement has three phases. The agreement, the design-build agreement is for all of these phases, 1A, 1B, and two of the project. The expenditure amount tonight is for Phase 1A only. Phase 1B and Phase 2 will be executed via amendment, subject to council approval. The agreement allows for termination of the agreement after Phase 1A and 1B. This is an off-ramp opportunity that we have to be able to change our mind and go a different route. If we do that, we do have to go back to the standard design-bid-build process. The scope of Phase 1A of the design-build agreement includes program validation, including budget, and scheduled development for Phase 1A and Phase 1B, development of the final basis of design, site investigation, 30% station design for replacement stations, and 90% design for the temporary stations, and a Phase 1A report. Here's a, a display for our conceptual design, or our conceptual layout timeline that we have. Phase 1A, we will be at 30% design with estimating and validation, and a 90% temp facility, with that ending on April 17th of 2020. At this point, you'll see the little icon for the arrows, we have the off-ramp ability. Again, by terminating the contract, whether it's due to the estimating price, that we just can't fall within parameters of the 35.5 that was, that was approved, or we feel that the design-build team is not working well together, we can use this opportunity to offer. From there, we'll continue into Phase 1B, and that will develop 60% design of the permanent facilities, and also develop our GMP, which is Guaranteed Maximum Price. At that point, we'll have cost certainty for what the project will cost. And right now, we're summer of 2020 is what we have projected. Of course, that's including pending the design builder's input, once we get them under contract. Phase 2, we'll move into construction period, and we'll have the guaranteed maximum price, final design permitting and construction. Schedule efficiencies. Original schedule assumed consecutive design and construction of Station 45 and 42. Design-build proposed schedule includes concurrent design and construction of both stations. Collaborative, developed schedule and phasing could result in further efficiencies. The first diagram is what we preliminarily put together of how we thought it would go from the city side of doing it consecutively. Once we got the qualifications and the bids back from the, our proposers, they proposed a shorter timeline with a overlapping and concurrent design and construction of both. It shortened the construction time period by roughly six months, is what we're estimating at this time. Phase 1A and draft budget. So, currently, we have allotted 27 million of the construction costs, and roughly 8.5 million towards administrative costs or contingencies, and the 1% for arts, along with property leases and any other miscellaneous items that we haven't accounted for, along with sales tax. Tonight, the Phase 1A not-to-exceed amount is for the $1,532,065. And that will give us the Phase 1A report and the design specs that I talked about previously. Questions?
I have a question. So, how much did we estimate the two stations would cost in the levy? Prop 2?
I don't have that information, but I believe it was the 35.5 is what was estimated in the, in the validation report.
So, we're in, we're in the green for what we are collecting for the levies, for what the cost is gonna be?
Correct, but what was pointed out is escalation costs for construction, and so that might come into play.
Okay, but it's looking good?
So far.
Okay. Any other questions, Deputy Mayor?
So, I had a question related to first cost versus long-term maintenance and operations costs. Do we, we don't know yet if it's going to be lead silver, or do we know what the requirements are?
It is gonna be lead silver, that is a Bothell standard.
Oh, it is, okay. So, I guess I would just ask that we, and maybe you already are, but I have to say it anyway. I would just ask that as we, as we make choices, that we weigh the long-term operation and maintenance costs over the initial first costs. In other words, if we have to choose between a fancy new blingy railing or whatever it is, that we put more emphasis on long-term savings of energy and whatnot, and maintenance.
Yes, and that has been put into our basis of design for longevity.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
I was going over your slide where you talked about the final design permitting and construction, starting the summer of 2020 and ending the winter of 2023. So, are you expecting it to be a three-year construction?
In total, yes. The preliminary report that we have shows, I don't have it in front of me. I should have had that, but I believe we have move-in of both 42 and 45 by winter of 2022. And then it would be site closeout, such as the parking lot, and that would extend the construction into 2023.
Okay. Do we have anywhere in there where if they get it done really, really early, we give them a bonus?
So, the, the way that we've structured this bonus is they don't get a bonus. Any extra savings will get rolled back into the project as extra scope.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. The two differences between the progressive and the design-build, can you speak to the, how that's, are those fixed prices, or is there any guarantees that we won't see change orders on those?
Well, there's no guarantees that we won't see change orders, but the idea with the progressive design-build is that the design is owned by the constructor. And so, most of the Arizona missions will happen between those two and not include the, an increase to the city.
So, it sounds like we're buying some security in the, in the type of contracting that we're doing?
Correct.
Okay, fabulous, thank you.
Councilmember Zornz?
A few, a few questions and maybe a comment. One is, I would love to tour some of these projects, or to, so if we could get addresses to at least do a drive-by and see what's, what these are. It would be fun to have that inspiration. I do have a question about, in our agenda packet, it referred to an open book pricing and transparency. And so, my question is, what will that look like? And will there be accessibility for the public eye to look at that?
I wanted to further question to our project manager from OEC, this is listed, Krista Lutz.
So, Krista Lutz.
Uh, so Krista Lutz with OAC Services. Um, the way this contract is set up, it's a cost reimbursable contract. So everything that's submitted by BN Builders will be both open book, we'll see it. And in addition to that, we also are working with Pacific Construction Consultants who provide auditing services. So there's an extra security, uh, from that, looking at, at it from an auditing perspective.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate the auditing component. Not that I, accountability is always a good thing, right? Then, uh, we got, had questions answered on how the scores, how the scoring played out for the four final. And I have to say, I was just, you know, it seemed like it was a no-brainer because it won in every department. It won in points, it won in, in the fee percentage, and it won in, uh, the, um, cost for us. So I appreciated getting that information. And then the, I had one other question because you said that if that, uh, one A and one B are completed, we could, what'd you call it, off-ramping?
Correct, yeah.
Do, do you know of that ever happening in recent history?
I am not.
Locally where some municipality or, uh, organization has off-ramped and what happened with that?
Again, I'll look to Krista.
Uh, so I know it has happened. I can't give you an example, but I could get back to you on that and ask some other people in our offices. The intent, if you go into a progressive design build agreement, is never to go that route because obviously you'll lose time and money by having to start over. So it's really your last resort, but it is an available option.
So it's a point of desperation that it's usually made?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know because that sounded like a pretty expensive fisher cut bait decision. And that's the, um, sum of everything I've got, thank you.
All right, see no other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that, uh, we authorize city manager to enter into a progressive design build agreement with BN Builders slash Miller Hall Partnerships in substantially the same form as attached and in the amount not to exceed one million five hundred and thirty-two thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
The dueling second move by Councilor Reagan, second by, let's give it to Councilwoman McNeil this time. I won't repeat it. Contract to build the two fire stations, is there any discussion or design, sorry, it's just design, isn't it? Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? See none? Oh, we do have a discussion, Councilor Reagan?
I'm just excited about this process moving forward. The citizens, uh, were gracious enough to let the city build these two stations that, uh, were in dire need of repair, so I just can't wait to get this project going and done.
You're here. All right, any further discussion? See none, raise your hand and say aye if you're in the affirmative. Aye, passes unanimously, we're on to study sessions, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we need to do something in between, didn't we?
Yeah, while we're shuffling people, I just want to take the opportunity to thank the public work staff, um, and the fire department. This is a huge lift. This is very creative, it's very cutting-edge, it's really intended to deliver the best projects under the shortest timeframe with the most cost savings. And so I just really want to acknowledge the work that the team is doing, especially Jeff. I mean, this has been a huge lift for you, really appreciate the work, the amount of, of learning that, that everyone's had to do. I just wanted to be sure that the council was aware how hard the team's working to make this happen for the community. I, I really appreciate it.
Good job, thank you. Okay, study session, AB nineteen dash one eight-six, this is the Canyon Park Sub area plan. And Mr. Blackburn, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. This is, of course, a staff briefing on an update to the Canyon Park Sub Area Plan. We've been doing quite a few of these for you, and we think it's important for us to keep you up to speed as to what we are working on at any particular moment. No action tonight, this is basically just, you're going to get a presentation from staff, but we would like to hear some questions and comments from the council as we get into this process to kind of speed up things a little bit for us. In a few weeks, the city is going to release what's called a draft planned action environmental impact statement. This is a big keystone event for us. There's going to be about a forty-five day comment period. We're given basically fifteen additional days to folks because we're looking at the holiday season. And there's a couple of things about a planned action environmental impact statement. There's some advantages to doing it through this process. One is, this allows us to do a comprehensive analysis of the impacts of the complete, complete project. In other words, the whole sub area plan will have an idea for the, uh, impacts associated with that. It also gives future development a really quick, easy way to go through environmental review. It don't have to separate and do separate or individual environmental roof. Those are two key factors with the environment, planned action environmental impact statement. One of the elements we're going to work on really hard here in the next few days is a public outreach strategy. We're working with Becky Range and our consultant as well as staff to come up with a really robust mechanism to get this word out on this project. And of course, we're talking about lots of different things, face-to-face, social media, open houses, webpage communication, public means. This is just going to build upon the existing work we have already been done. Our audience is going to be very diverse. We're going to talk about property owners, business owners, employees, residents, and neighborhoods surrounding the area. That's going to be a really important factor as we go into this process. The environmental impact statement is going to assess the impacts of several elements of the environment. And the primary ones are natural environment, land use patterns, which is big, aesthetics and urban design, socioeconomics, that's something that's going to be very interesting as we go through this process, transportation, greenhouse gas emissions, public services, utilities and stormwater. Those are going to be the primary areas that you're going to see within the environmental impact statement. The thing about our environmental impact statement is that the complexity of Canyon Park is really intriguing. And one of the things we got, we got, just not just land uses, but this is a major economic engine. We have a lot of really awesome and natural environment features out there. A transportation system that we all know is in need of some work. We've got a lot of transportation improvements we're going to have to discuss. As well as, of course, we have some outside influences, Puget Sound Regional Council, regional, uh, growth center, minimum capacities, that's going to be a big one. We have a couple of projects, Wash Dot, Express toll lane, off-ramp into the park, as well as sound transit bus-based facility is proposed within the park. And certainly, we have some private streets within this park that we have to, to have a discussion on how to deal with those particular, uh, features. So these are all things that are going to be really important topics as we go through the process. Now, we have a number of alternatives, and we've talked a little bit about this before. Certainly, no action, basically that status quo. What we have now in our comprehensive plan and our development regulations would continue on. And that's an RGC of about seven hundred and thirty-three acres. The thing about this is does not meet the framework provisions of the Puget Sound Regional Council. Now, they are now requiring that you meet at least forty-five activity units per acre. An activity unit is basically either a resident or an employee within the park, but you have to meet that minimum. Right now, our current plan gets us to just about thirty activity units per acre. And right now, we have an existing just about eighteen, so we're not too bad from that standpoint. But that was basically if we were to take no action, we just continue the progress on our current comprehensive plan. In the IAS, we have some alternatives, and one is called a live-work. And this is a slightly smaller regional growth center, about six hundred and thirteen acres. You see, we've lopped off quite a bit. Primarily there has been, been removed are a lot of, some of those natural features surrounding the area that were originally included within the park, or I'm sorry, the RGC, but kind of being taken out. This one proposes about a thirty-two sixty-eight employment population split in the land uses. And you can see that, the, the different colors up there, the, the purple, of course, is really basically the office, flexible office space area that has been so successful over the years. The other areas are kind of mixed-use areas where we introduce more residential, some other provisions, uh, offices, retail, all those kind of things. This is one of the proposals that are being, uh, alternates being reviewed. The other is a business plus, this one is strongly focused on business. Basically, it's a twenty percent to eighty percent population to employment mixture. So this is a really important, again, about six hundred and thirteen acres. Every single one of these alternatives, except the no action, meets the Puget Sound Regional Council growth target provisions. That is one of the fundamental items the council provided us. One of the things that is going to be interesting is that the mitigated boundaries. And as you start adjusting those RGC boundaries, you start having a little fewer activity units you have to provide. Basically, the concept there is seven hundred and thirty-three, you've got to add about another twenty thousand activity units or people. Six, five hundred and sixty-five, twelve thousand eight hundred, there's a big difference. That is directly proportional to what happens in our transportation impacts. Our transportation impacts really change as we start making that RGC boundary slightly smaller. So that's a really key feature that we're going to have a lot of discussion about as we go through this process, particularly the preferred alternatives, which the council gets to start next month. One of the things that I want to show this, this is kind of a mitigated live-work. And this is going to be something that's discussed real briefly within the EIS. This is more along the lines of getting us toward that preferred alternative. It's got a little bit different population and employment mix. It does get to the five hundred and sixty-five acres, and it has a little more flexibility in it as far as where we do, as far as the resident and the mixed uses. These are all features that we're going to have a discussion about as we start getting it. This is going to be major policy work that we'll be doing here in the next few months. We've already talked a little bit about some of the transportation, uh, opportunities we have. Uh, and of course, this is a, a slide you've already seen, twenty-fourteen level of service conditions, twenty-four-three, no action level of service conditions. You can see that the road system within this area is going to really be in need of some serious improvements, um, if we can. One of the things that we're looking at, and this will be something we'll have more discussion about is there may be some policy discussions we have for whether we can continue to meet a certain level of service within this area. It's really going to be tough. We talked a little bit about this, the need to get some of the folks from the RGC out to our rest of our street system. We do not currently have really good connections right now. That's going to be one of the features we're going to have to do, particularly to the west and to the north. There was a really important areas to get folks out of that Bothell Everett corridor. And this is a feature that you're going to see, there's going to be some of these potential connections identified. And these are kind of evaluations we do, north to five-two-four behind the Fred Meyer, west to Ninth Avenue, about a two hundred and fourteen street alignment. And a lot of potential improvements that we're having to look at, you know, along upgrading Ninth Avenue to a corridor levels. Right now, it's kind of a, a local access street look, um, add northbound lane to Bothell Everett Highway, add lanes to two-twentieth, again, that helps us get people distributed away from the RGC and to the RGC, as well as according to add lanes to five-two-four, the Maltby Road, which is basically the northern boundary, as well as seven intersection improvement areas that are being looked at within the draft EIS. One of the real key features we're going to have to look at is we're going to have to look at a transportation demand management approach. And what that does is you work with the, the businesses and the employees to do a number of different factors, you know, reduced trips like telework, mode shift, basically allow employees to use different types of mode, transportation modes like, you know, Orca passes, bikes, electric bikes, all those kind of things. Little more flexibility in our work schedules, we're not all departing and leaving during the PM and AM peak hours. Bunch of different parking strategies, again, try and get people to encourage them to use those transit facilities that are being constructed at considerable cost in the area. And of course, one of those is first and last mile. We've, keep talking about this item, and it's really important that we be able to get people from the park and ride or the transit center, which is basically to south of the park, throughout the park. So they don't have to worry about walking half a mile or more in the rain. So those are all really important things that we're going to have to add as part of this process. As far as the schedule goes, um, we are going to be issuing a draft this month, probably, hopefully. The planning commission is going to have a discussion on November twentieth. We're going to come back to the city council on December eighteenth, we're going to talk about a preferred alternative. That's where you're going to first start seeing some of these really interesting concepts put together. And of course, we've got some future dates that we'll be scheduling before the city council. We're doing a lot of public engagement, and that's going to continue as we go through this process. A lot of surrounding neighborhoods, we're going to talk about business property owners, we've all, we know what we have to do out there. A couple of key things that will happen here in the next couple of quarters is January, February, March, the council will be picking a preferred alternative. We'll also be starting to do some sub area plan and implementing regulations, land use regulations work. And those will be, of course, in study sessions and public hearings. Throughout the entire process, we're going to do a lot of public engagement, that is critical. In April, May, and June, second quarter, the council will probably be acting on a sub area plan and land use regulations. That'll be another real key feature. What do we want this area to look like? What type of an approach should we take? How tall should the buildings be? All those kind of items are going to be really key features that we have to talk about. One of the things that'll happen, of course, there is that we have to make sure that whatever do you decide to do for the design standpoint, we still meet our activity unit per acre minimums. And that's going to be a real, uh, interesting compendium of items. And of course, in July, the city council will hold public hearings and adopt a final ordinance and planned action EIS and all kinds of really fun things about happen with that. But that's kind of our schedule in the next few months, so we're going to be pretty busy. So thanks a lot, I sure appreciate your taking the time to listen to me. And again, we don't have any action you have to take tonight, but we would really like to hear some questions or have to hear your discussion points or items that you think that we should, that think about as we have these discussions, so thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. I had a quick question, the, one of the slides you had, the underlying zoning. It showed Centennial Park, uh, with, uh, I think it was R fifty-four-hundred A, underlying zoning. And so my question is, is that normal? Or do we usually have underlying zoning be park when we own the park?
Every single one of the city parks has a zoning designation underneath it.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of an old, interesting things that, and a lot of times what happens is zoning caping before the park.
Right.
I know that's what happened there.
Okay, I was just curious. Other than that, I think it looks really good. I appreciate you guys kind of whatever carving off the unbuildable land, basically, in our regional growth center and try to get us to the target. I can't emphasize enough to fellow council and everybody that's listening that it's super important that we keep that designation as a regional center for, uh, transit dollars and investments into our infrastructure, um, from regional funds. So I'm really glad that, Bruce, you're at the helm of this and that we're taking this, um, to fruition so quickly, too. That's really good that we're moving, we're moving this fast on it because you know that the PSRC will be knocking soon. Uh, and I'm glad we'll have an answer, so. Those are my comments, does anyone else? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Bruce. So I, I echo what the mayor says, uh, being on the transportation policy board, when we look at, um, grants, regional growth centers get a lot more points. So I'm trying to understand the mitigated boundaries, are those proposed? And I guess I'm not understanding, you're showing three different, maybe I missed it.
Absolutely, and basically what this does is this shows the difference in the amount of activity units would have to accommodate under different sizes of RGC's. So the idea is that at seven hundred and thirty-three, we'd have to add twenty thousand. At five sixty-five, you have to add about thirteen thousand. And that basically gives you us an idea, a reference point saying, okay, well, we know we need to meet these RGC standards, we can take some of these areas that we can't build upon, you know, wetlands, all those kind of features, and we can reduce our total number. And it helps us with our transportation impacts.
So, so what does the process look like in terms of altering our boundaries and getting those approved by PSRC?
Right, PSRC is going to give us quite a bit of latitude. We, in our, in our earlier discussions with PSRC staff, they have identified that, uh, our RGC has to be at least four hundred acres or no bigger than six hundred and forty acres. Or no, I'm sorry, two hundred acres, I'm sorry. So we have a lot of latitude between those figures for making some changes to our area.
Okay, and then I just wanted to ask, in terms of the three, um, alternatives? Yeah, so no action, uh, whatever the second one and the third. Have we evaluated, or is this part of the next, uh, phase? Which has the most impact on traffic? Because we know traffic is hideous up there, and I'm just curious if we have some inclination or idea of where.
Generally, the live-work alternative has the higher traffic impact on it. It doesn't seem to make sense.
Right, it's counterintuitive.
Because, yeah, and, and the other thing is too, we're putting more residents. And so it's just because of the intensity of some of the provisions. We are getting them dialed in a little bit more, and so when you see the EIS and we have our discussion, we're going to give you those numbers so you can really say, oh, I see. And of course, we're trying not to do too many numbers tonight because I spent a few hours at Build-A-Bang, I numbered out. hours at Build-A-Bang and numbered out. But the idea behind that is that you're going to see some of those differences in how that works.
Yeah, it is counterintuitive because you would think that if people could live near where they're employed, there wouldn't be as many cars on the road. So that's interesting. Great. Well, thank you for your hard work. I can tell you, you're zooming on this and really excited for us to finish it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, again, thank you for your hard work. I only had one question, and I was kind of curious, is why only northbound Bothell Everett Highway for the lane? Because I seem to be driving up there some mornings, and southbound looks just about as bad.
I think it probably is. Interestingly enough, in our current conversation plan, we actually have a southbound lane add. So it's a matter of just kind of balancing them all out with these processes. But as we go into this, we are going to have a lot of discussion. We have a little tactical, technical advisory committee we created that has a bunch of regional transportation experts on it. And we're going to have a lot of discussions as how we're going to attack these transportation woes, if you would, within this area. So that's a good point. So we'll keep you posted.
Councilmember Olson.
Thanks for the presentation, Bruce. So what's the downside to shrinking the RGC? Because it seems like we've talked about our, just the regional growth area, having these kind of lemons of areas that just always have been weighing us down.
Well, interestingly enough, not a lot of downsides. What you want to make sure you don't is you don't want to have an RGC that's so small that you don't have that synergy. And one of the things that's really interesting about the type of employers we have out here, Life Sciences and some of those biomedical device-type manufacturers, they rely on each other. There's kind of this really built-in synergy, and I, you know, not to use a phrase too much, but they like to steal each other's employees. And so that's a really key feature. They like having those other type of, of employers within that area. We also have a great advantage because we have the University of Washington, which has got some great, you know, programs, Cascadia College has got programs. So making the RGC too small is not too bad, but we don't want to make it so small that we lose that synergy of the rest of those companies out there.
So is the PSRC relaxing there or giving us more latitude? Because it seems like, you know, we kind of just drew this big box, kind of like, oh, here's what you can do. But now we're saying, oh, well, let's carve out these pieces because they just aren't really applicable to a regional growth center.
Well, you know, you bring up a good point because initially, our RGC was much lower than they prefer. They actually had a maximum size that we're getting much closer to. And, you know, let's face it, this was something we did back in 1996, and so there wasn't a lot of framework criteria. In fact, some of this has been just recently done in 2018. So we do have better guidance today than we did 20 years ago when we first set that up. And again, as long as we meet those framework criteria for minimum areas and we can make the case from a land use perspective, I think that the Pushtown Regional Council will be very supportive of this.
All right. Thank you very much. You bet. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Bruce, and I appreciate your outreach to the public. I would like you to speak just a little bit about the business owners themselves and their engagement in this.
Yes. One of the things that was really fascinating when we first started this, the vision process, we had this stakeholder group, and we had a lot of the business owners out there, as well as the property owners. And in some cases, the business owners were meeting the property owners for the first time. We have a very strong desire to have a lot more engagement with our business owners as well. And there's about four or five that we meet with. I don't want to use a regular, but we do have times when we meet with them, and we keep in touch with them. A couple of the big ones, Seattle GenX is one, Juno Therapeutics is another. We try and have these meetings. Whenever they have an issue, they have to come to it. So we're going to do a lot of that kind of engagement. We also want to get the employees involved, too, well.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, and thank you, Bruce. So I had a couple of questions. The first question I had is around the population in that area. We talked about live-work alternatives. Do we find that the population in that area actually works in that area?
That's a good question. Unfortunately, not that much. What we are seeing is that we're seeing a lot of, I don't want to use the term outmigration, but a lot of people live up in the South Snohomish County area and come into the area. One of the things that was kind of amazing is that they did some analysis, the consultants did some analysis, okay, where do people come from who work here? And it's, they're all over the region. And this kind of brings up that whole issue we have with people living in one place and working in another, or changing jobs and things like that. I believe the greatest concentration tends to live north of us, more toward kind of Mill Creek, South Everett, seems to be the greater concentration of where we have our population coming back and forth on a daily basis.
So as we go through the process of the types of businesses that'll be up there, will that be something that we're looking at also?
A little bit, yes. One of the things that's kind of interesting is that as we've been learning more about what the, these companies are looking for, their employees love this urban style of life, living. They love downtown. They love some of the things happening in, you know, if I can use the term, South Lake Union. They love that kind of stuff. So if we can start duplicating that kind of an approach here, the employees are going to be really excited about living here, and that's something we really need to do.
Great. And then I guess the last question would be more around transportation, infrastructure, how that gets paid for, are we working with the businesses, any type of busing, things like that that are going to happen up there? I know that's going to have a large impact on us.
Yeah. In fact, one of the things that we're going to be doing is, and again, we're, we're kind of still in some of those beginning stages, but there's no doubt there's going to be a pretty significant amount of funding available for the infrastructure out there, not just the city of Bothell or Snohomish County, but WashDOT, as well as, you know, some of the regional partners we have. Sound Transit, Community Transit are all going to be doing some more working on this. We've been doing a lot of discussion with Community Transit, in particular, about some of the incentives they would like to have for that first and last mile. That's a really key thing there. And Community Transit just opened up their Swift line that goes from Canyon Park up to Boeing Field. So we do have some good partners out there that we're going to be having a lot of discussion about. Where all this money is going to be coming from? We'll have that discussion later.
Yeah, we have tight budgets here, so.
Yes, we do.
We need to work regionally. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kaderman, did you want to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Bruce answered the questions. I was going to add in a few things, but he's already addressed those. But I did want to just talk a little bit about the process. There's a comment about how quickly we're working on this, and that's important to keep in mind because the state funding that we're using to do this phase is through June of 2020. So we need to use that money and get this done in that amount of time. So that's one reason we're trying to do this on a pretty fast track. We're already a little bit behind where we had hoped to be, and one of the reasons for that is because the transportation is become, it's a tremendous issue out here. It's not a surprise to anybody. We've been working very closely with the, the technical team that Bruce mentioned, as well as our internal Public Works Transportation staff. This has been a real joint effort with Public Works, with the executive department, particularly Jeannie Ash, working with the businesses out there and the property owners, as well as Becky Range in helping us with the outreach and the Parks Department, because that's an important component of the area that we're trying to create, the type of environment we're trying to create out here. As I've mentioned before, I think this is a unique project. I'm not aware of anything else that is doing this in this particular way. Most places, you either have an area that's in decline, typically an older manufacturing area that is, you're trying to renovate or rejuvenate and make that into more of an urban type of environment, or you have an area that you've had this plan in place for a while, but you just need to get it going, Totem Lake being an example of that. This is the only one I'm aware of where we're taking an existing viable, valuable business park, employment area that's important, not only to Bothell, but to this part of the region. That's one reason it's a regional growth center. And we're evolving that into a more mixed-use urban environment. So it's, it's a little more complicated, it's a little more challenging, but it's also more exciting for that reason. We have been working very closely with the Pushtown Regional Council as well through this process, as well as the business and property owners. They are key to this. PSRC, we will have to submit this plan to them for approval. There was a question about how much latitude do we have and what do we need to do to change the boundaries? We've talked to them about the boundaries. They're comfortable with the direction that we're going with that. So our plan will have to be approved by them ultimately when we get that adopted by the City Council. At this point, I think we're in pretty good shape, you know, in anticipation of what their questions might be that would go through the, the Growth Management Planning Council and then ultimately the Executive Board for Approval. So we're moving along. The transportation, as we've talked about, and you're going to hear more and more about this, one of the reasons that we wanted to come to you ahead of the draft EIS coming out is just to make you aware of a lot of the issues that we're going to be talking to the public about. We are going to be looking at additional entrances and exits from the park. That means extending some streets. Some of those could have some impacts on neighborhoods, and we'll be talking to the neighborhoods about that. It's important that everyone is aware of that as we work through those issues. That is going to help us deal with the transportation issues. As Bruce mentioned, we're not going to solve the congestion problem out there. We're going to have to talk about a different level of service or maybe a different way of measuring our level of service. We're going to have to talk about non-infrastructure improvements like the traffic demand management. That's really going to be, I think, the, the critical piece of this whole transportation package. All of that's going to be discussed in that draft environmental impact statement that's, that's going to come out. I'm pushing Bruce to say it's going to be out at the end of the month. He's hedging a little bit, and that's, that's fine. I understand that. But we do want to get it out soon and give people the full 45 days to give us some comments on that. There's a lot happening out here, even beyond the plan that we're doing. So, and that's another reason we've had a lot of conversations with the property owners. They're, they're feeling that they're, they're a little overwhelmed with all of the different projects that are happening between WashDOT and Sound Transit and the city projects. So a lot going on, but again, a very exciting project and a very important area to the city and to the region.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Councilmember Zorn?
It's really more of a thought. I'm glad you clarified that we have the timeframe of deadline on the funding because I thought, oh, my goodness, Bruce is really eager to retire here the way that space is going. But 527, I'm a little selfish here because I would love for us to become a, almost a self-sustaining community, and, but 527 is a hurdle to connect, you know, to have communication between Canyon Park and Bothell. And so I'm going to be really excited to hear and see the conversation that comes out of Planning Commission. You guys are going to have to weigh, how, how do you, you know, draw and keep people there while we wait for that connection between Canyon Park and downtown to open up? So I'm really eager to see what you do.
All right. Any other feedback or comments around? We're doing good. Thank you, Mr. Blackburn.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are we doing good? No break? Slogging forward? Everybody okay? All right. AB 19-187, study session on the 2019 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. And we have, Tracy, I'm forgetting your last name, Prokowski. There we go. Prokowski. I put a W in there, Prokowski.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I think that this is going to be our last study session on the PROS, which may make you happy. Makes me a little sad, having worked so hard on this since March of this year. Uh-oh. Uh-oh. Well, I might have to stand. Nick, can you shut up? All right. Sorry about that. Let me just get myself organized here. Oh, it wasn't on. Imagine that. I'll still stand.
If you want to sit, you're welcome to. Go and sit back down if you'd like. We're okay.
I do have 52 slides for you tonight, so maybe sitting really is better. Okay. Let's start again. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Here's a quick agenda of what we're going to cover during our time together during this study session. So I'm going to do a quick PROS overview, and then I'm going to talk about our existing program and asset review, do a really deep dive into the community engagement that we did over the summer, then talk a little bit about our capital project planning. And so that's really one of the main areas where I need some of your assistance this evening, work into some of your council direction, and then the next steps. So ever so briefly, what's a PROS plan? I know that you all know this, but I think this might help some folks at home. This is a six-year guide and strategic plan for our department, and it really works through our parks, our trails, our special events, recreation, and it works into both capital planning as well as maintenance. It functions as a policy and strategy guide, a capital planning tool, a technical study, and most importantly, a communications tool, so that the community knows what they can expect and what's coming. Our last plan was adopted in 2014, and the six-year term that we're working on right now is required from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office because a PROS plan or a similar document is required for grant eligibility. And so we're working right now on a six-year plan, but we're also trying to expand this outward to be more of a six-to-10-year plan to get a little more long-range planning. And so this major update that we're working on right now to the plan is very strategic and focused and really works on the following three questions. What are our strengths in park recreation and community events? How should we serve our local community? And where should we focus our efforts? And I'm off by a slide. We're striving to create a plan that's responsive to the community and council goals with a bit of a special emphasis on your fiscal goal and being fiscally responsible. In terms of our timeline, we started in March of this year, and our original plan was to be done by next month, December. However, it's taken this a little bit more time due to that extensive community engagement and working through reviewing some of our assets. And so right now, we're on track to be done January, February of next year and have the plan submitted to RCO on time at the end of February. So in other words, we are going to meet that deadline. So our steps to building the plan, we've done already our park, trail, and program assessments. We've done our community engagement. We're right, we've done our needs assessment, and right now, we're really working on that capital project planning. Then we're quickly going to move into our implementation and funding strategies and get through plan and program approval. So this is one of my favorite parts about being able to talk about Parks and Rec is showing lots of pictures because the city really does have an amazing foundation of amenities and events, places and things that we're looking to maintain and build as our community both grows and changes. So in 2014, the council adopted the following five goals. To provide a parks and recreation system that will meet the needs and improve the quality of life for the citizens of Bothell. To promote a range of recreational opportunities and provide local recreation programming, which complement services offered by other agencies in the city. Maintain and operate a park system to a level and quality that will enhance and promote Bothell's unique character. To conserve, enhance, and acquire open space, natural areas, and wildlife habitat. And to acquire and develop land for active park and recreation facilities with a focus on the Snohomish County section of the city. So you've seen these before, the last time I spoke to you, but I just want to work through them again, really as a basis for how our community has changed over the last 20 years, as well as since the last plan that was adopted. And so between 2000 and 2019, our population has increased by 51%. Our median household, our median household income has also increased 51%. The number of our owner-occupied units has dropped slightly, so that means that we have slightly more renters now than we did 20 years ago. The other thing that's changed is other languages spoken at home has increased by And so that's something that we'll be taking a look at as part of the plan drafting in terms of inclusion and equity and how to make sure that we're reaching everyone in the community. Our parks and open space acres have increased by 112%. There is a slight typo up there. We have 403 acres. And during that same time, our staff has increased by four FTEs. So what exactly does the city own in terms of parks? We have 403 acres of parks and open space. 141 of those acres are urban forests, five are cemeteries, 28 acres are sports fields, about 230 acres are passive use only. So, that's low-level impact, generally few structures, except for possibly trailhead amenities. And 168 acres are active use. And we maintain about 3.6 miles of regional trails. The thing to know about the active and the passive space that's here, those aren't empty acres. So, all of those great pictures that I showed you of our existing playgrounds and water access, those are included as part of that active space. We have a lot of amenities. And so, not all of them are listed here, but one of the things we learned this summer and came out loud and clear as part of our community surveys is the community isn't quite sure what we've got. And so, definitely more marketing and more sharing of what we have is needed. But we have 11 parks with barbecues and picnic tables, 14 different playgrounds, eight restrooms with 31 stalls. I mention that because of the maintenance and operations of 31 stalls. Three artificial turf and six grass fields, and those are multi-use. So, that's baseball, softball, rugby, soccer, football, and sometimes even cricket, which is super exciting to see out there. We have 12 open grassy fields. We have water access, a horseshoe pit, and disc golf, just to name a few. Moving rapidly into some recreation trends over the last couple of years, our standouts are really kids' sports and adult softball. Our kids' sports, those are contracted programs. We use largely Skyhawks, and kids love soccer. And over 1,000 kids have participated in that program over the past two years, so 1,000 per year, which is pretty exciting. Adult enrichment classes, we're struggling a little bit there. In 2018, 16% of those classes were canceled due to low registration, and in the first half of this year, nearly 24% of those were canceled due to low registration. We use a contract model for our recreation program. In other words, staff is not providing those programs themselves. We go out, we find instructors, and then we split the revenue with them. So, staff is doing the marketing for those, putting together the bridge, handling registrations, cancellations. The instructor then comes in, teaches the class, buys supplies, does anything along those lines. We've changed that contract model slightly. So, in 2018, it was a 75-25 split, 75 to the instructor, 25 to the city, and this year, we have changed it to be 80-30.
70.
70-30. Okay, clearly, it's not a good night for me. So, these classes are also offered by YMCA, as well as private businesses. Average class size is about nine for adult enrichment classes. You'll see, though, up on the screen, the numbers, though, for adult softball, wildly, wildly popular. And if there was a way that we could fit more teams as part of the rotation, I feel very confident in saying they would be filled. And it's pretty cool. It's adults, as well as men's teams. We have beginners, as well as very seasoned folks, coming out and playing all summer long, and it's very, very exciting. For kids' classes and camps, again, notice the same typo because I just copied and paste. The kids' offerings, like I said before, are really the Kids Love Soccer and the Skyhawks program with over 1,000 kids there. You can see, can I make this work? If I could figure out this out. There we go. Our bump in summer registrations is really due to those programs. And so, that's where most kids are taking advantage of Bothell Recreation Opportunities. For both of those organizations, you can register with either the Skyhawks or Kids Love Soccer, as well as Bothell, and that's an interesting twist there. For other kids' classes, the parent and me averaged about 12 per class, and non-sports camps for the summer averaged around 13, so much lower. The community loves our special events, though. And that was one of the things that we heard when Nick and I were out doing community engagement, was how much people appreciated Bothell's sense of community and how much they wanted more of some of those opportunities. But these are truly cherished and very well-attended. And so, you know, we have between 5,000 and 8,000 people who come out annually for the Fourth of July Parade, and that doesn't even include the hundreds of kids that are in the kids' parade in the floats. The concerts, you know, vary based upon the act, but 700 to 800 each Friday night at Music in the Park is not uncommon. And as the kids' concerts gain more popularity and more people know about them, we're seeing more and more people out there with numbers more than 3, 4, or 500 on Wednesdays, which is really, really exciting. So, moving back into direct PROS work, this summer really was the summer of community engagement. We've spent some time with you, the council, talking about PROS. We've also spent some time with the Parks Board. We also, though, did a community survey. There were surveys mailed out to individuals, as well as an online survey, and we received over 1,200 responses, which is a lot. Most communities receive around 500 or 600, and so, we were really, really thrilled to be able to hear from our community. We also did a dog park survey with over 1,400 responses. Did a survey among our teens, 154 responses, which I'm absolutely thrilled about, to get teens to be able to respond to something that government does. We did three stakeholder sessions, and so, we invited our environmental groups, our sport groups, to come in with individual conversations with our consultants, so they could feel confident in speaking freely, so we could really learn what was on their mind, what they liked, what they didn't like. Together, Nick and I did 18 community meetings and pop-ups, and we hit the range, right? Our goal was to reach very deep into the community. So, we did chamber events, we did kids' events, we were out at the dog park, we were out at the parks, because we were really trying to meet people where they were, to really learn what was on their minds. We also did one community workshop. We had 32 attendees, as well as a bunch of online engagement, otherwise known as email. This, though, is really why you're here tonight. I'm going to work through our survey results from the community survey, as well as the teen survey and the dog survey. And so, there was a mailed survey, as well as an online survey, and the results from the two were fairly similar. And so, what we were looking for there through the random mail sample was to see, for the online survey, was there extra voting? You know, were people going on and maybe filling the ballot box a little bit? I'm thrilled to say that they weren't. And so, we've combined these results together, and that's what I'm sharing with you. So, again, there were over 1,200 surveys returned, and 97% of people who responded back said that parks and recreation are essential or important to the community. 81% of those say that it's essential, and 16% say very important. I think that speaks volumes about what we're doing here. We asked folks, what are the top reasons that you've visited a Bothell park in the last year? And this was a multiple-choice option, so you could choose several. Trails and relaxation were the top two, with fitness, playgrounds, and wildlife viewing also fairly popular. We also had an other category here, right? You'll see that there's 18.9% of people who said "other." In your agenda bill, I included a full copy of our survey results, and all of the free text responses are included in there. I've also got a couple of slides as we move on to talk about some of people's free text One of the other questions that we asked them was, thinking about these following items right here, walking trails, parks, picnic areas, sports fields, community events, and rec programs, are there more than enough? Just about the right number? Not enough? Or do I don't know? Right? And so, we like to think of this as the Goldilocks question. What's that sort of sweet spot? And so, just under half of our respondents think that the city of Bothell does not have enough walking and biking trails. More planning is needed here to really sort of dive deep into what people are talking about here. Are they talking about paved trails, mountain bike trails, road bike trails, bike lanes? But this begins to give a little bit of a snapshot about what people are thinking of. 44% of our respondents think that we have about the right number or more than enough parks. 56% think that we have about the right number or more than enough community events. And 38% said the same for recreation programs, but 42% said, I don't know. So, there's definitely a bit of an information gap there. There could also be a demographic gap here, in that more than half of our respondents to the survey don't have children. And so, there could be a connection there. All right. So, we also asked people to give a priority ranking between certain system improvements. And so, we asked them about developing new amenities in parks, expanding the recreational trails network, acquiring land for future parks, acquiring land for open space, and should we provide more classes, camps, and events? And as you can see, developing new amenities in parks was the single highest priority, right, right there? So, that's the largest section of dark green. But the sum of the top three, right, so was it your first priority and your second priority? Expanding the trail network and acquiring land for future parks, those were sort of the top two when you included what people's all three priorities were. You'll notice that providing classes ranked fifth there, and again, that could be a demographic We're also trying to ask people, thinking about council's goals of fiscal responsibility, sort of where their support lied for different amenities. And we broke those up into two sections, lower-cost amenities and higher-cost amenities. And so, when we asked them about lower-cost amenities, there was strong support for trails, all-inclusive playgrounds, and picnic shelters. But again, this was an opportunity to choose more than one option. We didn't say what was most important to you, but which of the following would you support? 70% or better of all the respondents supported all of these, and so, it's safe to say that there's strong support for all of these low-cost options. I should say, lower-cost options. Then we get into the higher-cost amenities. And so, we asked folks about river access, a splash pad or a water spray pad, a skateboard or a BMX park, artificial turf fields, and cricket. And there was strong support for a river access and a splash pad. However, I will note that this survey was done during the dog days of summer, and so, it's likely a little skewed that people were looking for water options to cool off. However, in other areas of the survey, those two items, a splash pad and a river access, came up over and over again. So, there really is strong support here for these two items. We probed a little bit on how respondents felt about additional taxes, levies, bonds, additional funds to pay for some of these amenities. One of the things I want to say about this question is that no question was required of our respondents, and less than a third of people actually answered this question on taxation, which is not uncommon, right? People either, A, don't have enough information because we're just throwing out an idea, or people think, oh, I'm not going to answer that because if I say that I support it, then I'm sort of stuck and I have to support it. So, but anyway, so we did ask this question, and we wanted to know what people thought about a community center, the splash pad and spray park, paying additional funds for additional community events and festivals, for sports fields with lights and artificial turf, or the skateboard or BMX park. And a slight majority supported the ideas of a community center and a splash pad. So, let me get into what I think are some of the really interesting areas of the community survey, which is when people had the opportunity to share with us their thoughts, what did they say? And so, when we asked them why they visited parks in that other category, these were some of the things that we heard. Cricket, mountain biking, disc golf. You'll notice that that was one of the things that was also listed in the dots to be able to choose, so sometimes people also wrote them here. Dog play and dog walking, meditation, rock hunting, canoeing and kayaking, swimmer and water access, and trails. And if we asked you why you didn't come to a park last year, oh, we heard a lot of those too. So, not enough restrooms. The restrooms were closed or they weren't clean. That was of particular importance to families who have small children. There's no off-leash dog park, or there's too many dogs or too much dog waste. Parking was an issue, lack of maintenance, they were too crowded. And then, we also, in our free comments, you know, people don't necessarily know what does Bothell own, what does King County own, what does Snohomish County own? So, like, that's my language right there. We got folks who were complaining about how fast people go on the regional trails, but we look at that as an opportunity for partnership with King County to try and sort that out for our residents. People also talked about, you know, no pickleball courts or dedicated courts, and shade structures. So, both in the summertime for the sun, as well as in the wintertime for protection from the rain, that was a common theme that came up. You also notice, again, don't know what's in the parks. Yeah, we figured that one out. So, we also asked people for some of their project ideas, and they were, our respondents were very vocal, very creative, very innovative in some of the things that they offered. Staff categorized these, and I did my best, quite frankly, in terms of the cost. There are lots of assumptions here based on broad ideas, whether or not land acquisition is needed, but somebody wanted a treehouse, equipment for checkout, dedicated open space for drones, rocket launches, that one terrifies me, radio aircraft, kite flying. I liked this, without concern to disrupt co-located activities. So, I thought that was really an interesting comment. People wanted food trucks, community gardens, more free events. They're looking for a farmer's market. Lots of people want a Renaissance festival, which I thought was interesting, car show, more places for kids under five, like more Talats, and greater ADA accessibility. That theme of inclusivity came up over and over and over again in the comments. A few more sort of lower-cost ideas, parking lots. People complained a lot about parking. People that wanted more volunteer opportunities, the ability to plant trees or do beautification in our parks, as well as updated amenities. Moving up into free text for sort of mid-range projects, right, sort of $2 to $9 million. More parks or open spaces, and here, I'm talking about smaller parcels of land, particularly in the north Bothell section, right, particularly in Snohomish County. Sportsfield construction, or to artificial turf, our existing fields. Splash pad came up again. A pickleball complex, complete with indoor pickleball courts or outdoor court lights. Some sort of adventure park idea, right? A mountain bike park with obstacles or a rock climbing wall, or an equestrian park. I didn't know we had that many horses here in Bothell. There are also, though, a few really, really pricey ideas that people came up with. And so, a lot of people talked about Shelton View Forest and acquiring larger parcels of land, especially in the northern part of the city. Community center, particularly one with a pool, and free indoor spaces came up. And then, I loved these, so I had to include them. An indoor aquarium or small zoo, and potentially botanical gardens. We could have the Bothell Botanical Gardens. You should know that most survey respondents for this section of the survey, 25% of our respondents were between 35 and 44. That was our largest group, followed by 20% who were 65 and older, and 19% who were 35 to 54. Over half of our respondents, 56%, had no children at home. Of the remaining 44 households, 16% had one child under the age of 18, 23% had two or more, and 5% had three or more. So, keeping along our theme of children or individuals under the age of 18, we also did a short teen survey. And so, just as background, we had two collection mechanisms here. The city was invited to Inglemore High School for a career day fair, and so, we took the dual opportunity to bribe youngsters with a cookie to fill out our survey, while also talking to them about the wonderful ability to work for the city of Bothell and work in parks and recreation. And then, we also reached out to the Bothell High School ASB president and asked her how she thought it would be best to reach out to her peers. And she suggested an electronic survey, so we used the same survey, and that was actually disseminated by text and Instagram, and it was open for two weeks, and we had 154 teens respond back. So, very, very exciting. The breakdown of those, 76% of the teens who responded were 17, 16% were 18, 7% were 16, and 1% was 15. And so, one of the questions that we asked them is, what do you guys like to do for fun? The vast majority of them, 79%, they like to hang out with friends. 60%, they go to the movies. 55% of them play sports. But, you know, folks like to post on social media, they like to go to the beach, play Pokemon Go, do school activities, and lots of other fun things. And so, the top three, you know, again, are hanging out with friends, movies, and sports, going to the beach, hiking, and arts. And arts encompass music, crafts, and sort of everything in that genre. Those sort of make the top five. Teens, perhaps not surprisingly, were more interested in events or things to do than amenities. And so, even though a whopping nearly 84% would love a hangout space like the Hangar, and 63% want more walking trails, which, by the way, is very similar to the, sort of the adults, right, the general community survey, that desire for more trails was also a very key theme there. Their largest interest was in events. And so, really, what they'd love to see are some things to do here in Bothell. And so really what they'd love to see are some things to do here in Bothell. And so doing movies in the park, 79% of them wanted to see movies in the park, 71% thought that food trucks in the parks were a really cool idea, and 70% thought that teen concerts would be great. And that could be either like a music-in-the-park model, right, where we're bringing in a band. But lots of teens also expressed the interest of having like Battle of the Bands, or some of their friends have bands and they could host a concert. And so there could be some interesting opportunities there. And festivals and special events for teens rounded it out at 62%. Just like in the regular community survey, we also had some opportunity for some free text. And I would like to say that I chose the ones that are appropriate to say in public. We did poll teenagers after all. So they wanted road biking trails, basketball courts, flat spaces for roller skating, although this was interesting, a study space open after 9:00 PM. Wanted to be able to volunteer or beautify in the parks. When we were at the career fair, that was one of the most common questions that we received from them, how can we volunteer? And so I thought that was pretty exciting. Looking for picnic days, coffee shops, parking, specifically interested in a McDonald's, a ski bus, and because they are teens, drive-in movies. All right, so now moving into dogs. So for our dog park survey, we received just over 1,400 responses. Eighty-four percent of those responses were from Bothell residents, and 91% of those said it was a definitely needed amenity here at the city of Bothell, right? Absolutely overwhelming. And most dogs are sort of a mid-to-large size. There is a lot of community support for a dog park here in Bothell, because one of the questions that we did ask was, are you interested in being on a committee or volunteering or helping us to get a permanent dog park here in Bothell? 282 people provided us with their email address and requested more information on that, which I think is just incredible. But most dog park users, and this is a statistic that's played out across the country and in all kinds of literature that you'll read about dog parks, dog park users want a dog park near their home. Our survey verified that. The top choice out of the options that I offered for where to host a dog park, pretty much even. So wouldn't say that we got a whole lot of information there, except for the fact that people are looking to have one close to home. Forty-four percent of our respondents said that they would use a dog park a few times a week, and 26% said they would use it daily, 20% said they would use it around once a month. Currently, most of our survey respondents take their dogs on at least one or multiple walks around the neighborhood per day. And this number right here said 5% just about let them go illegally off-leash in parks. I think that number is a little higher than 5%. We did ask if people had any concerns about having a dog park, and the vast majority of people said, nope, no concerns. But the top three concerns were excess dog waste, were there any, you know, issues with animal vaccinations or illnesses? I think people were probably specifically thinking of gertria there, and any safety issues, and those would be like excessive barking or dog fighting or anything like that. And so far, those things have not happened in our pop-up park, which is very exciting. So, after all that community engagement, we're able to boil that down into what we've heard so far and put together some really core themes. The first one really is, take care of what we have. And so the survey respondents in our community are looking for us to upgrade and improve our existing parks, add some wayfinding and interpretive signage systems, people really want to know what we have and where it is, ADA compliance and barrier removal, that theme of inclusivity came up over and over again, as well as minor repairs and renovations to our current facilities. They're also looking for that Parks and Programming for All, so connecting and expanding the trail system. A dog park, please, a dog park. Some limited new park amenities with strong support for a lot of those lower-cost amenities, making sure that our parks and our events are inclusive, hosting quality community events, concerts, and gatherings, and then with a special focus on special events for teens, the concerts, the food truck nights, and the movies in the park. I feel pretty confident that you're probably tired of listening to me talk, so before I move into my second section, I'm going to pass it back to the mayor to see if you guys have any questions.
I keep starting first, but I'll just go ahead. So you mentioned in the last 19 years, we've only added four FTEs. Do you know what our base was, like how many FTEs we had originally?
Would have been 14, because we have 18 now.
That was really the only question I really, oh, the other one was the dog park survey. So is that a separate survey, that somebody would have had to self-select, I guess, I want to take a dog park survey?
It was, and that was because the dog park opened well after the regular community survey was open, and so that was our way of trying to marry and collect the information together.
Because that maybe, would you think that might have skewed the results a little bit, that somebody that would maybe be interested in a dog park would have filled out that survey versus people that don't?
Absolutely. There were, we did get a small number in terms of proportionality of individuals who didn't want us to have a dog park, didn't own dogs, and thought that it was a terrible idea.
Somebody took the survey without a dog. That's awesome. And I had one more question for you. What was it that knocked me off my, anyways, it was super important, I'm sure. Does anybody else have questions? Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And first of all, thank you very much. I know how hard you worked to really communicate with the public and get their input. So both Tracy and Nikki did a great job in that respect, particularly also, as you well know, the teens. I'm very pleased with what I hear. But I think when you kind of said what were the priorities, it was take care of what we have, which is critically important. And I think interpretive signs are interesting when you say 100% of the families said that they have a language other than English in their homes. So that's something that kind of key, makes me think about what we are really doing on low-cost kind of issues. And then, let's see, I think the teens asking for inclusiveness and to participate and to volunteer, you know, and these aren't questions, I'm sorry, they're observations. But teens can do a lot for parks. They can go in and do huge projects that really make a difference. And so I'm kind of tending toward thinking, how can we use our teenagers who want to already volunteer and be a part of our community? So thank you for your work.
Councilmembers Orange.
Well, I was sitting there looking at the teen thing, and I was like, either I don't act my age, or I don't act my age. But a lot of the stuff they have, the ideas that they were voicing, I would want to do, especially the food trucks. But just one question, because I'm trying to figure out how badly we, not the parks, have failed the Snohomish County end. Because I saw one of the goals was park acquisition, that was one of the goals for Snohomish County. And Centennial Park is older than five years, isn't it? So we really haven't moved off a center for Snohomish County in meeting that goal or addressing that goal, or have we?
It is. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about parks' location and geography as I move into the next section of my presentation on capital planning, so hold your thought.
I'll hold it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, it's already been said, but I have to reiterate, unbelievable and commendable community outreach. That's fantastic. It felt like everywhere I went this summer, you guys were there, so thank you for your dedication. I had a couple observations and questions. So when people talk about river access, is it for canoeing? Can you maybe explain more what they mean by that?
So one of the downsides of the survey is, you put out information and people will interpret it as they want to. And so additional research and community engagement will be needed. However, what I can tell you, though, is from those free text comments, people talked about kayaking and canoes, and there were several comments about feeling a bit of a struggle with our existing hand-carry boat launch in the park at Bothell Landing and not wanting to interrupt the concession stand that was there, as well as swimming access in the slew.
That's frightening.
I agree.
Given our report on our water waste earlier this year.
But I would assume, though, that it's more hand-carried boat launch access is my initial assumption through reading through the free text comments in terms of what people are looking for, for river access.
Okay. So I attempted to read through some of the comments, and I just wanted to mention, I was surprised by the number of comments about mountain biking trails. It seemed overwhelming, and it seems like that was in the low-cost scenario, and obviously we have a really great resource in Wayne to be able to do that. And it occurred to me that it also would be something for teens to do as well. I have to mention that my favorite response was the "I love Tracy" response.
I swear, I did not pay anyone to write that. And whoever that was, I'd love to know who you are.
It was awesome. And then when it comes to, one thing that I, I'm not sure everyone recognizes, but I think, and I think we don't maybe advertise it as much as we can or could, is that half of North Creek Forest is in Snohomish County. And I don't think that we acknowledge that often enough, because I think we're always kind of beating ourselves up. But I don't think they've even ever heard us talk about that half of North Creek is in Snohomish County. So I don't think, while we have a ways to go, we haven't been completely oblivious to Snohomish County. So I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. We all love parks and rec. But I'm curious around the, there was a couple slides that were showing kind of the languages and things like that that we saw earlier. As our demographics change in Bothell, as we grow and expand, I'm kind of curious, the actual results that we turn on the surveys seem like they, like if you have a dog, they're favorable for dogs. If you were a teen, it was favorable for teens. So I'm just curious, your takeaway from that, if people have kids, are they going to vote for more things that are kids-driven? But what is your takeaway on that?
I think that that's very, I think that's very true. You know, if you have kids, you're looking for more community events, more tallots or more camps. If you're a senior, you're probably looking for more walking trails. I think that that's a very natural tendency, that we're looking to get amenities that benefit ourselves and our families and people that we love. One of the things, right, so when we think about, you know, some of the changes in diversity, one of the things that caught my eye, I don't want to make anybody sick, strong support. So you notice we put a cricket field on here, and that is because we have a growing Indian-American community, particularly in the northern section of our city. And so here, we have 25% of the people who responded here are somewhat supportive of a cricket field, and 7% are very supportive. And I think that that begins to show a little bit, how our community is changing, or how our community is also recognizing that need to be inclusive.
Okay, and so as we move forward on some of these things, do we look towards the trends of how we're going to grow and what our population will look like years to come?
We are. Unfortunately, we will not be able to include the 2020 census results, which will give us a greater idea of our demographics. But that is one of the things that the consultant team and myself are looking at, are how are we projecting the different demographics of our community, both in terms of age and race and children, and then how to factor in amenities as a part of that.
Okay, and does that include the types of parks and open space and active space as we grow, what those needs will be? Those are part of the plan as well, is that correct?
It does, and you'll see a little bit of that as we move into the capital project planning.
Okay, thank you.
We're good to move on.
All right, let me get back to that section of the presentation. Here we go. All right, so for the last half of the presentation, I'm going to be talking about some of our system gaps, as well as some of our capital project planning. And as I move into this section, in your folders and in your packets, I included, one, a map, only because when it comes up on the screen, you're not going to be able to read it. And then also, as I move into lists of potential projects, which I'm going to be asking for your feedback on as I bring this presentation to a close, they're going to come up on the screen, but I wanted you to have a way to be able to take a look at them and not necessarily have to do a ton of flipping back and forth between slides. As the consultant team and I began that process of examining system gaps and identifying any potential gaps, we've been looking at our park access and distribution, the physical accessibility of our parks, our different diversity of places and spaces, how we serve today's residents, and how we move forward to plan for future growth. And it's this information, plus the information from the community survey, which has created the proposed project list that I'm going to be talking about. Before I get to the projects, though, I do want to talk about a map. And see, I told you you wouldn't be able to read it. That's this one. And so what this map shows is a half-mile walk shed from each of our parks. And so where you see the pink, right, that means that it's within the half-mile walk shed, or in other words, a 10-minute walk from a park. You'll also notice that there are some areas that are a little darker in color than others. That indicates that there's a higher density of residents in those areas, and as the color gets lighter, there's a lighter density of residents. But what's on this map are our existing parks, our open spaces, and also if HOA, if a community development has a playground, it's also included in all of this. The National Parks and Recreation Association, one of its goals and metrics is that every resident should have access to a park within a half-mile walk, right, within a 10-minute walk. And you'll see that language dotted throughout various plans and elements here in Bothell. And that's one of the things that I'd like your opinion on. Is that something that we should continue to strive for? Because you'll see that there are a number of gaps. Now, that, of course, is Canyon Park. There's a gap here, and as we move down. And that's because if we're going to try and fill in those gaps, land is not getting any cheaper. And so we may want to think about readjusting some of our near-term or longer-term projects to put a greater focus on land acquisition, if the 10-minute walk is something that's important to you as a council. All right.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? Can you go back to that map? I think it'd be helpful if we had some information on that kind of map that shows where there actually is residential development, because that, like the northeast corner, for example, is there, is there anybody even living, you know? There's parks there, but there's, what are the green, the green spaces are public open spaces?
Yes, the green spaces are public, so these neon-green spaces are city-owned. These light-green ones are like tract parcels, so they could be owned by an HOA or a business area.
Okay, because it just kind of gave me, it just made me think like, well, if we think that we have a problem there, and we actually don't. Because I guess, my point is, I think the northwest portion of the city, that is residential area.
Yes, this is residential.
And the northeast is not, and neither is the far east over there.
Right, and so there's a little bit of residential here, and you'll notice that there is an HOA development here. But that's one of the reasons why I pointed this out, is that is Canyon Park.
Okay, I just, just from, just so the general public sees, like, we don't have, like, it looks like, if you look at this map, there's about half the city has access to a park within a half a mile, or maybe even less. And I guess, I would like to know if that's really the case or not, because it doesn't look like, is that the case?
I can work on getting that precise data for you and separating out sort of what are the commercial and the business areas from the residential areas. We haven't done that yet, but I'm happy to do that for you.
That'd be cool. Thank you.
All right, hang on one second. So as we were moving through our various survey results and taking a look at the system gap analysis, there were a lot of potential projects, right? And so we need to have some tools for sort of balancing those demands against system gaps, our budgets, our spending. And so what we did was we put together a list of criteria, and we placed a greater emphasis in terms of ranking potential projects by the ones that I marked in red and underlined. And so, for example, our ability to leverage funding was very important and received additional weight. Location and geography, because there really are some gaps in our system map, also ranked heavily, safety and security and community need. We also, though, did consider usage and resident benefit, as well as if there was local or regional significance. regional significance. The other consideration that we took into account, you know, when we talk about sort of planning and moving forward, is the PROS as a planning document really focuses on, what are we looking at at the future? What do we hope to accomplish over the next six years? But one of the key themes and core themes that came out of the survey results was, take care of what you have. So this is our department's asset replacement list. And so this is the way that we take care of the things that we have. And as you can tell, there are a lot of items on this list. Some of them, so for example, like the artificial turf replacement, you're going to see on the next screen. And so some of them, we've already moved over into specific projects. But just something that I want you to keep in mind as we plan potential projects and potential CIPs, that we also still have a lot of current responsibilities. So I want to start off first, talking about potential projects. For those that have a real safety and maintenance component, and so these are the projects that we are proposing, putting in our PROS plan, to really focus on through now through 2025. And remember that including a project in the PROS plan doesn't mean that it actually gets funded. We still have to go through the capital facilities plan process and our regular operating budget process. But obviously, we don't recommend that any of these be removed, but if that's the direction you'd like to provide us, we're more than happy to do that. They are listed in a bit of a ranking order, right? So how staff feels that more emphasis should be placed on the ones on the top of the list versus on the bottom of the list. But you'll see that there's a bridge condition analysis for the former Wayne Golf Course. We have the turf replacements for the two North Creek sports fields. There's pavement repairs, there's sport court resurfacing, there's ADA entry improvements, and then there's also boardwalk replacements. I can't stress enough that these are real estimated numbers, so we take general projects that we have, or projects that have been proposed as part of the survey. But we are looking at potentially about $2.8 million over the next six years to cover the safety and maintenance issues that have come up as a result of our work thus far this Moving into potential projects for the near term, right? And these are realistically things to focus on as potential projects during the next six to eight years, so a rather short timeline. And again, they would have to go through the CFP and the budgeting process. This is slide one of two, so I'll be talking one next time. And so look at the sheets that I put in your packet. Just a couple things. So you will notice, for example, that there are quite a few that are shade structures. And I'm sure you're thinking, why did I just not combine those all up together for one line item? Sometimes it's easier to find $15,000 than to find $100,000, which is what all the shade structures would cost. And it does allow us to sort of phase, or if we're working on a playground renovation or something else at a park, to sort of work that through. Let's see here. And then also, some projects, like putting together an all-inclusive playground, believe it or not, that doesn't cost a dollar. I'm sorry, it doesn't cost zero dollars. It means that we don't have any idea what that might cost. We haven't done any sort of planning or community engagement on that. And so in order to be able to, be able to ballpark a cost, we'd have to understand what you and the community would like to see as part of an all-inclusive playground. So again, up at the top is a park wayfinding system, various shade structures, some ADA paths and structures, keeping with that all-inclusive theme. A dog park is here on a potential near-term project with a shade structure. It's very important to our respondents at the dog park that there was shade. Handicapped parking spaces. And then moving over, again, standardized and ADA-compliant park benches and tables, a restroom replacement for Blythe Park. And our consultant is recommending that we do the restroom replacement outside of the Blythe Park master planning process, in that the restroom really doesn't have that many years left. And so to separate that out from the phasing of the master plan implementation. But paved access to the amenities at Tall Tree Park, a shade structure at Volunteer, Brackets Landing and ADA path and picnic table, a potential skate park or BMX park, and then a paved loop trail at Conifer View. And you'll notice that these have a price tag of just about $3.5 million, recognizing again that the all-inclusive playground is not included in that total number. So don't focus too much on these little numbers down here, at least not until I get to the last slide as I'm talking about potential projects. Those are the big-ticket ones. So moving ahead long-term, right? So one of the things we've been talking about as part of our PROS plan is how to get us out of this short cycle of planning and being able to plan and budget for the long term, and be, really be able to take a look at longer-term funding opportunities and leveraging funding. And so thinking beyond our current CFP cycle in 2026 and beyond, these are some projects that we've come up with based upon the community survey. And again, that system gap analysis. And so a north Bothell park, both the acquisition, and that really be an active space, not a passive space. So then also including design and development, putting together some additional trail planning. This here really fills in our system gaps. Trails, walking trails, very important to the community, so a potential loop at Canyon Creek. Thinking about completing the master plan for Centennial Park. And then we get into lots of costs unknown, right? Because remember, we're projecting out beyond six years. A teen space, river access, whatever that might look like, more multi-sport courts. And you knew there had to be a second slide, because there was no number attached to the bottom there. Thinking about trails and site restoration for the former Wayne Golf Course, a splash pad, changing North Creek 3 from grass to turf, working on our connectivity master plan, thinking about our five contiguous parks from downtown, moving into the former Wayne Golf Course. A master plan for the park renovation of William Penn Park. And then also, this would be the first phase down at the bottom to complete the master plan for Blythe Park. There are a lot of zeros on estimated costs, and that's a really big number. And so in all likelihood, many of these projects aren't going to be possible unless we're sort of planning out to the 20 or potentially 30-year mark. And then these are the big ones, right? So these are the really expensive projects that we've been talking about, that have been included in previous PROS plans or have come from the community. And for these, we really need some sort of alternate funding source. And I'll be blunt when I say, grants may or may not make up a part of it, but we're really talking about some kind of bond or levy or taxing mechanism to be able to afford these. And so here, when we're talking about land acquisition, we're talking about larger parcels of land, any potential work that might need to be done on the bridges of the former Wayne Golf Course, a bike skills or adventure park kind of facility, the completion of the current master plan for the park at Bothell Landing, Shelton View Woods, and then an aquatic community center. That would be the community center with pool and free indoor space. I personally think 18 million is low, but that's the number that we've had in our plan forever and sort of, we're keeping with that until we can, if there's a desire in the future, to sort of frame out what that looks like as part of an additional discussion on alternative sources of funding. $47.7 million. And so that's really the reason why we're looking at sort of outside funding sources there. All right. So before I get to the two questions that I have for you this evening, I just want to briefly go over what our next steps are going to be, because this is going to be coming to you for final adoption and approval fairly shortly. And so we're going to incorporate the feedback that you've given us tonight from this study session into our draft document. We're going to have a draft of the plan to the Parks and Recreation Board in December. In December or January, I'll be giving a briefing to the Planning Commission. And then the full plan is going to come for you for final adoption in January, February-ish. And so that way, we meet the deadline for RCO in the end of February. I figured I would throw this in now, that way I could ask my two questions, get the direction, you wouldn't have to listen to me talk again. All right. So two areas that I really need your direction on to be able to move forward with this plan and make sure that it meets your needs and your goals. So again, thinking about this map that we talked about, outside of the information that I still owe you and the rest of the council about where businesses are, is this 10-minute walk shed to parks something that you would like to pursue as a goal in the plan and thereby reprioritize potential capital projects by land acquisition? Or would you like to focus more on park amenities and other areas?
Boom. All right. Who wants to go first? There we go, Ms. Rolson.
I really think you said it very well, Tracy. Thank you for the presentation, first of all. But just, land isn't getting cheaper or increasing in supply, so I think, you know, focusing on land acquisition and where we should develop that or locate these parks. I think you've already, you know, in those future-looking plans, you know, identified some of those areas where the biggest gaps currently are. So I think that's the emphasis that people want is, you know, they want to work where they live, and they want to play where they live as well. So it's, you don't want to have to drive, you know, a long ways to get to it. You know, I think the dog parks have been super popular down here, just because we're having so many more people living in downtown. So I think it's just more of a testament that, you know, with more higher density living, we need more open space so that they can still have that.
Councilmembers Orange.
I'm really torn as well. When we talk about density, I beat the drum that people need sanity of open spaces, that we can't compress everyone. That said, we have to pay for what we take care, you know, what we have. And so if I have to choose one or the other, I guess my druthers are in our planning, that it bears on our planning commission, on our planning department. I'm sorry that I place that burden on you. For those open, sane, breathing spaces for compressed density that we have. The one acquisition that I would love to see the city support is Shelton View. And it's going to be, we have a motivated community over there, and I am relying heavily. I think we have tapped, as a city, we have tapped out our real aggressive acquisition with Wayne Golf Course. And so apologetically leaning on the people around Shelton View to heft that load. But North Creek people pulled that together as well. So the only acquisition that I can see as taking an exception would be Shelton View. But that's not necessarily something that the city is in a position to bear. So for the dollars, take care of what we have and add those amenities, because people ought to be able to bus to those places, correct? I mean, if I have to pick and choose, I'm going to say put those dollars in improving the existing parks. That's my two bits.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And this is amazing report. It's daunting, because it's a lot of money on each of these desires and projects, and something that we probably don't really have access to. So what I really appreciated is saying, how can we have some partners here? Or really be, put ourselves in position to get grants, because that's how we're going to get where we want to go here. But I think if I was going to put things in order, I would say we have to do safety first. And how many parks do we actually have?
26.
26. Okay. I was thinking 29, but 26, all right. And then, you know, your emphasis on taking care of what we have is critical, on 26 parks. That's a huge, especially with Wayne Land as well. It's just a huge step. So safety first, take care of what we have, and then finally, look for the gaps in the community. So the gaps, to me, that I've heard tonight are the language access, so that people who have different languages can also have access to our parks. The teens need some kind of opportunities and access as well. But just looking at where are the gaps? What part of our community are we not serving? And where should we go from here? A half-a-mile walk to a park? I would go farther than that. I would say at least a mile, at the very least, for all residents. But I know that the challenge here is getting these dollars together to do what we have outlined here as needs, and that's a concern of mine.
Councilmember Agnew.
You know, I think if we had an unlimited budget, we'd go with land acquisition right now, because we all know that it's going to be, get just pricier and pricier as it goes on. I think we have to maintain what we have right now. I saw two of these line items that had zeros on them, about the bridges at Wayne Land. And I know neither are ADA-compatible. So those two ticket items are millions of dollars. I think we need to get as many partners as we can get. We try and need to get as many grants as we can get, but we definitely have to take care of what we have first.
I think it would be helpful to have an assessment of, A, as Councilmember McAuliffe said, looking a bit further than half a mile, and also some sort of assessment in terms of what's available. Because I know not that much is available, but it might be helpful to know what's available and what size parcels. That would probably play a part in what I thought. It's a little hard at this point to make a determination. I think, gosh, it's so tough, because I know where this is going. And I'm, anyway. I think, yeah, we absolutely have to take care of what we already have, but I do think we can't. When we look toward the future, being more dense and more traffic, I think it's really important that we provide people as much as possible complete communities within their neighborhoods to live in. And I think part of that is being able to walk to a park. I mean, it was very clear in the dog park graph that people want to be able to walk to the dog park. They want access that's close enough that they can walk to it. And I think that not only applies to dog parks, but probably just parks in general. The roads aren't getting any less congested, and I think the way to combat that issue is to provide people with the amenities that they want and need in a way that they don't have to drive to it. So I guess I would go with that, but of course, I want everything. So hopefully, that's helpful to you in some way. Thanks.
So I'm not a big fan of string from a national standard, so I would say we should strive for half-mile walk sheds. That being said, it would, like I said about the land use, I'd also like to kind of know from a per capita resident basis, not just land basis, but to show us, you know, how many people do have access to a park one half-mile from their home, instead of just kind of on a map? Because some areas are denser than others for density. The bigger question, I guess, acquisition versus taking care of what we have, I always want to call her Leonhart. Director Leonhart added to our Public Works, when she parks was part of Public Works, well, any project in the capital budget. We add how much, we have a line item in there, but how much staff time or how much, you know, ongoing resources in which you need to add things. And I think it's really important, a lot of cities don't, actually don't do that, and they're starting to do it. Trendsetter, right over there. And so it gives me a lot of pause to say, oh, yeah, just keep buying more land. Yeah, this is, keep going. Because if we can't maintain what we have, then you got to just stop for a second. Like, do you keep buying cars when you can't change the tires, you know, or change the oil on them? Like, you just need to stop and maintain what you have. And so I lean that way. I think we need to take care of, I think we have a beautiful park system. I wish we had more money. I mean, I had kids that grew up through our park system and, you know, visited quite a few. And, you know, you look at our parks and our playground structures and everything else compared to like other parts that have more money in their park system, or more park, a larger parks budget, and you could see a pretty stark difference, you know? So I'd like if, I like quality more than quantity, I guess, is my punchline where I'm going with that. But I think it's really important that we don't stray too far from an But I think it's really important that we don't stray too far from a national standard, at least from a grant standpoint. Because it'd be really hard to say like, oh, we know the national standard is X, but we're Y. And I don't know if you're looking at us compared to other cities when you're trying to figure out who you're going to give money to from a grant system. That would just give me pause, I guess, if I was the grant reviewer. Being like, oh, they're just shooting for half the, twice the distance than the national standard. That's just me. So I said enough. The closer, Mr. Councilmember McNeil.
I think you stole all my thunder. Thank you. Amazing work on this. I think I added it all up and it's somewhere plus or minus $100 million worth of projects. Yeah, huge undertaking for our community to be able to do all these projects all at one time and even expect it's going to be done by 2050. But I think the thing that I key in on is, is acquisition requires maintenance. And that's something I've recently learned over the past four years. When we acquire these lands, it requires maintenance on these lands. So one of the things that I like to see, you know, maybe future things that I'll be studying is, when we say it's $2 million to acquire something, what is it going to cost us to maintain that on a yearly basis? One of the things that we just ran into an issue with is our senior center and it goes 30 years with no maintenance. These are things that, you know, hopefully we can start thinking, being fiscally responsible that we're going to acquire something, we're going to need to maintain it. We're going to have to have FTEs to maintain it. So that's kind of where my mindset is that, you know, yes, it'd be nice to prioritize and acquire all this land because we know the cost of land's going up. But what is it truly going to cost the citizens? And making sure that we're giving them the real information on what it's going to cost, not just to acquire it, but to maintain it. So speaking on Shelton View Forest, love to acquire it. I think that, you know, we need to find more parks and open space in Snohomish County. But I personally don't look at Snohomish County or King County versus each other. I look at Bothell as a whole. And we need to find ways to improve the active life of our citizens, of our community. And I would agree with the mayor. If the national standard is a half-mile walk shed, we need to kind of stick to that standard so that we can go out and get regional dollars and grants and things like that that would be available to us. Also, as far as growth, understanding where our growth pockets are going to be and understanding where that half-mile walk shed will be for that growth, that future growth that we're going to see. So for me, I think partnerships, finding additional partnerships, working with nonprofits, whatever it might be, is going to help to do some of this, but it's not going to help to do all of this. And I've had to come to that realization because, you know, I'm huge into sports fields and making sure that our kids are able to get out and get active and whether it be open parks or whatever, dog parks, I'm all about that. Because, you know, getting out and getting healthy, you know, it's all a part of what we're trying to do nationally is getting people healthier. But understanding what that impact, fiscal impact, is going to be on the community and making sure that they're aware of it in the future. So I think the priority will be, you know, for me, the priority would be more understanding, you know, what it is, the walkability, the walking, walk shed. Understanding if we're going to acquire something, what it is going to be long-term to acquire that piece of property. I think what we have now, we truly do need to maintain. Nick, you've talked to me about sports fields. And one of the things that you've talked to me about is that if we don't maintain a field or, you know, it's worn down to a certain level that that field could no longer be used. And that's a huge impact to our community. It's not just dollars that are coming in, but it's impacting all those men's leagues and women's leagues that are playing on those fields and the programming that we offer to our community. So making sure we're maintaining the stuff that we currently have to where it can continue to be used, I think, is critical to us. So, thank you.
All right, so that was question number one. Now it's question number two. So thinking about the project lists that we briefly went to and those that are in your notes, are there any potential projects that you think should be added, removed, changed to a different category?
It's like jeopardy. Don't all go at once. What's your next question? We'll come back to that one.
This is it. This is the hard one. And this is it.
Which of the North Creek fields is turf, grass, growing grass?
Three.
There we go. Deputy Mayor's got an answer.
I don't have an answer, other than I would say, can we please stop doing master plans that we can't afford to pay to actually implement? I think that should drop on the list. I don't know how much we spend for the Park at Bothell Landing, but that's never getting built, so that's money completely wasted. So in my opinion, if we don't have money for, to actually implement the park, I would put that lower on the list, I guess. Least, I guess I would say, at least don't keep stocking, stacking them up, you know, if that makes sense.
I have a question. Cedar Grove Park, the field repairs for $600,000? I thought we did that.
So those are fully grant-funded and they are temporarily on hold as I finish the pros plan project, but they're on my number-one agenda for next year.
All right, so they'll be off the list once they're on the list, kind of thing? Or an accomplishment?
It will be, yes.
Okay. That's my big addition to that.
You have splash pad installation under potential long-term projects. And we probably need to move that into alternative funding sources needed.
Thanks for coming, Boy Scouts. You guys have a good night. Anybody else got some movement on the lists? Can we get back to you, too?
Absolutely.
I think they need some time.
If it could be by the end of next week, so that way we can get the draft to the Parks Board by our meeting in December, that would be ideal.
By the end of next, will you send them a reminder?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be good. Are you sure not this week?
At the end of next week will work.
Oh, you have a change, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Well, no, I don't have a change. But I do want to reemphasize that when we look at safety and maintenance projects, I would put those at the top of the list because those are what are most important. Other ones that we go to on long-term planning or potential near-term projects, I still would put safety and maintenance first.
All right, we're good on that one. Thank you. That was a long one. Thanks for presenting. Good job. Okay, so we have a closed session, then we have council conversations afterwards. Do you guys want to have council, are we going to come back after closed session to make? Okay. So do we want to do council conversations now and then go to closed session? Or we want to have a break? How do you guys want to roll this? It's 8:15, so we're past our normal break time. Okay. So I should have mentioned that at the agenda schedule. But anyways, okay, so council conversations. Does anybody have any council conversations?
We've just had some of the emails coming up about our planning session in the spring, March, I believe. And I just wanted to see if there was thoughts on the format that we have, just in my discussions with the manager and assistant city manager. They've, in the discussions, we've talked about other styles that they may have where there might be some community involvement for maybe the first half of the day. And then we have deliberations and more of our internal discussions and goal-setting in the second half. So I just wanted to bring that up and see what other people were thinking or if they had any thoughts about it, just so staff could have time if we do want to change it before March.
I haven't heard about this, so I'm not quite sure what I'm reacting to. But I think it would be helpful to, we're going to have a new council member to have maybe some ice breaking. Just a thought.
So I just want to make sure that it's clear. There was a question that Councilmember Olson had for us. So it hasn't been discussed with the council.
No, I was.
I was like, what is this? I haven't heard of it.
An email came up and I was asking them about the format just when I came through it, you know, two years ago. It was very early in mine. And I was, you know, you're just eyes wide open, fire hose and all this information coming at you. And so I was, I was just sitting there absorbing it.
I remember because it was similar for me, but I, yeah, okay.
So you're just absorbing it, so.
So you were making suggestions?
I was just asking because that email came up and it was like, so what are we doing for this? You know, because I know what is coming now. And I was just asking them. And then they go, oh, well, this is what's potentially possible.
It's usually such a packed day. It's really hard to.
And the point was that it's your decision. Like, Councilmember Olson was asking, how is the format set? And we had talked about the fact that you suspend recordings. Those are all your policy decisions. I just need advance notice to know, do you want to have it in the council chambers? Normally, we go off-site. Would you like it televised? Would you like a different format? I just need some heads up if you'd like something different. I've been directed over the last three years to have it as a certain format. If you want to change, if you want to change that format, I just need to know. And so I suggested that you bring it up to all of you if you have other ideas, just to let us know.
Could you maybe send out what the format has been typically so we can maybe react to it or make suggestions? Because I don't, I'm trying to remember. I mean, I think typically, don't we go department by department? Is that the format?
Correct. It's normally been a presentation, so it's what we're talking about is the annual goal-setting. And/or we've also done one for budget. But it's just an opportunity, so the staff usually comes in. We spend the morning talking about accomplishments from the prior year and then sort of challenges that we perceive we have in each of our departments. And then we talk about the year ahead. So it's either setting your two-year goals or it's refreshing the second year of your two-year goals. So it's a conversation, it's giving the direction and it's all sort of framed around the goals. The challenge with the, so what I sent out was the March goal-setting, to set the date for that, the all-day on Friday. We have a lot to talk about. And the city has some significant budget challenges that we're going to have to talk about. And so if you want to frame out some time, if you want to have it more inclusive and you'd like to actually invite the community to come in and give you feedback, you could do it on a separate night or you could do it that morning and allow an hour or two for community feedback on your goal. So you have that input as you're putting, because we're going to be talking about, a little bit about 2020, but we really need to focus on 21, 22 because we're starting to build the 21, 22 budget. So it's really, what do you need in that goal-setting? I know what to deliver from an organizational standpoint and the information that I think you need and what I need back from you to build the budget. What I don't know is what do you want from the community? It's the community piece that came up as part of the discussion. What are you looking for from a community involvement?
So I have another council conversation item to bring up. We heard from Breyer's mayor that they want their turn on the health board. Are you okay with, we're supposed to rotate it anyways?
Yeah.
So are you okay with that? And I can just reply to him and say like, great, Bob, go for it. Okay. Thank you.
It was expected.
Take care of that right now.
So can I get back to, or, because there is, I don't think there's a huge number in the community that wants more ease, our conversation to be easily accessed? Because we do have it open to the public, right? Where they can come in and, however, it's always good getting feedback, especially if you're talking about a tight budget and we have to make decisions. I have to tell you internally, I'm going, oh crap, oh crap. I might need some time to think about it and digest. So my question to you is, one, if, as far as opening it up to the public, whatever's going to be easiest, so having, keeping the door open so people can come in? And how hard is, what's the easiest way to record or broad, you know, which is easier? Record or broadcast?
So city manager, before you, so council conversations weren't really to ask the staff questions? They were supposed to be for us to discuss? And those meetings are actually open to the public? So we keep saying they're not, but they are?
Right.
Okay, they're just not recorded? So you actually physically need to be there?
But my question to her is, as we decide, is what is easier for this, on the city end, to do? Is it record or broadcast? Or are they one in the same?
One in the same.
Okay. And then, so then the other question I have is, can we, is it, would it drive people bonkers if we were to split it up? Where we had the material presented and then we were to take a council session after we, you know, like the Tuesday afterwards, to actually make a decision? And that would give community a chance to give us, fire off some emails quickly or give us quick phone calls? Is that something that we could do?
I had another brainstorm. Something like that, but maybe take one of the quarterly conversations at the library and just focus on that after we have our discussion. Does that make sense? Because the comments that I've seen on social media is that it's a work day and so people don't have access and then we don't record. But those council conversations have typically been on a Sunday. And the city manager has been with me many times to those council conversations and they're pretty well-attended. So maybe we just issue invitations and say, this council conversation will be specifically about as the topic. And just make sure we have the relevant information and preparation. Would that work? We're not supposed to talk to you, anyway. It's just an idea.
I just reject it. I don't think this is the place to have this conversation. I don't think that that's, that we can really make good thoughts or processes about what we should do right here under council conversations. So I hope we can discuss this at a future time.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there, brainstorming.
Councilmember McNeil, oh, I'm not supposed to call it. You're just supposed to.
So I had a, I had just a couple things real quick. So one was, we all received some letters from Inglemore High School. Do you guys recall those letters that came in from Inglemore High School students? So I was wondering if maybe somebody, if you guys would like to join me, but I'd like to go to that class and hear from those students personally?
I went to the class on Friday. Sorry.
That's okay.
But there was another class I couldn't go to, so maybe she'd like to have you.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to, you know, if anybody would like to join me, I'll reach out. And well, Tom, you'd like to join me? Okay. Rosemary, anybody else? You'd like to all join?
Three, we've got three.
Well, only three of us will go. And I'm not going to pick, I'm going to draw from a hat.
I don't need to go.
Okay, so we'll do that. I just thought it would be really cool. And even if we don't all do it together, at some point, if we can get up to those students and kind of just engage with them, I think it'd be kind of.
So they've already had, just so you know the format, they had, they've had Representative Kloba and Mayor Baker. And I was there on Friday. And it's really fun because you go and they have no idea about anything, although they did learn about the GMA. But what was scary is I was sitting in a class full of, a very diverse class, and they all voted, mock-voted against I, our initiative, referendum 88, because they didn't know what it was until I explained it to them. And they all thought, they all were shocked and embarrassed because they were like, oh, that's what it is? So it, I think it made them think, oh, gosh, voting actually really matters. And actually knowing what you're voting for is super important. So it was a really, really fun discussion. I encourage you to go. It's pretty fun.
Awesome. Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will definitely do that. And the last thing I had was, we're on target, fingers crossed. Everything is going to go smooth with the North Shore Senior Center levy passing. And on the 20th, we're going to have a meeting. Now, if multiple council members attend that, do we need to notice that meeting? If more than three of us attend that?
Yes.
Okay, so on the 20th, hopefully a big celebration. We can celebrate that passing. So does everybody here want to attend that on the 20th? Six o'clock PM? Rosemary be gone? Vina, Liam? So we will have a quorum. So how do I, I will figure out, I will talk offline.
If I'm not going, do you? If I'm not going, do we have a quorum? Because I don't want to.
Yes.
I'm an Olympia, so you can take me out.
I'm part of that group.
Yeah, so there'll be, there'll be four of us.
I wasn't sure.
Wait. We actually, you do need to talk into the microphone, even though we're not calling on you.
There'll be four of us, so we'll notice it. But I just want to give a special shout-out to, to our entire community, Councilmember McAuliffe, for all the work, everybody at this table, for all the work they did in supporting individually. It was a huge undertaking to get that passed on such a short notice. But Bothell, I can tell you, we steadfast, and, and city manager, assistant city manager, coming in and helping, you know, as being the chair of that committee, deer in headlights, not knowing, but seeing that there was an issue. You guys came in, and I can't thank you enough, because if you hadn't come in when you did, we would not be here today, and our community would probably have a pretty significant loss right now for one of the populations of our community that's very important. So thank you very much, and hats off to the entire city for their help.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Yes, thank you to the citizens of Bothell for voting for the senior center. It was really critically important, 70% in King County, 60% on and above in Snohomish. And I'll tell you something, I was out there door-belling, and everything that any of you did made a difference. Because when I first started, it was like, what was this all about? And by the time I got done, as we got closer and closer to the election, people knew, this is the senior center levy. And so it was really, even in phone calling, right? We saw that happen as well. Mm-hmm. Because Tom and I were also phone-calling. But thank you.
She's better at phone-calling than I am.
And then I did want to just tell you that the NICATIME did the heart assessment at Bothell High School. 567 students were screened, and out of that 567, six were referred to a cardiologist. That's what saves lives. So it's pretty exciting. Whenever you hear about NICATIME, you know, they're going to go into a school, assess kids for their heart condition, and save lives. I think it's pretty, pretty important.
Are we done conversing? All right. Let's do, we're going to go into closed session pursuant to RCW 4230-1404, for about, for about, how long? Half hour? So we're going to be in closed session until 9 o'clock. We don't anticipate coming back, so we will be adjourned after closed session.